I call the monthly meeting of the McHenry County Conservation District meeting to order. I ask everybody to rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Roll call.
President.
Present.
Vice President Cook?
Here.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Don?
Here.
Trustee Dayton?
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Present. And trustee nominee is.
Howard Hargis.
If. Okay, with that, I want some of the conservation ethic and goal. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis for our interest and nature to develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number five, to assure sufficient integration of key district functions, educational services, site planning, land and facility management, and natural resource management to maximize the overall effectiveness of the district. Reading of the Conservation Stewardship pledge. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources in thoughtfully developed cities and towns, strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number one, to protect land, push filters, remove pollutants of water while enhancing groundwater recharge. With that, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening. Pat has the motion as the second. Linda has the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Vice President Cook?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
And President Henning?
Yes. Motion, this agenda is adopted unanimously. We'll move on through that agenda. Brings us to recognition of awards, or introductions also. Our first one is our recognition of Police Chief Laura King receiving the 2022 McHenry County Women, Woman of Distinction through Shaw Media Group and Northwest Herald. Do you like to say, or?
Oh, no, well, just thank you. And I know I expressed this to President Henning before, but it is a very unique and highly valuable experience for me to work for an organization that supports their employees and helps to lift them up instead of trying to make a complicated project succeed. So I'm sure to all where Elizabeth is the person that nominated me, and I just cannot tell you how much I appreciate the support and the encouragement and the opportunity to lead that the Conservation District has provided me. And I get support from people who love me, and I get tremendous support from the people that work with me on my team. So I'm just so thankful for your support. Thank y'all.
Thank you for all you do. And then I see that our financial group has won another award, another certificate. Andy, congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys just keep knocking it out of park everywhere you go.
Pass on, I appreciate our team supporting us. How we manage, we change, we survive.
Thank you for all you do. That's really, that's all. So we have, we have members of the foundation here?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
I'm here, they're going to show up around six.
About six? Okay, well, we should be about finished by then.
I think that was the plan.
It's going to be warm and. All right, thank you. Trustee report, any trustees have anything they'd like to report at this time? Hey. Oh. I get it. Thank you. For, honey, ladies, I want to report, Kelly?
Just real quick, first of all, I have, hopefully, a little early at McHenry County tonight, and hopefully my hair is not flat. I want to say congratulations to Chief King. I'm hoping to be at the banquet. It's an excellent banquet, and it's so incredible to hear everybody's speeches. So, great job. And then I want to let you know that there is still the path to 2050 going on with the county. So today, actually, right now, they're having an in-person public open house meeting. Obviously, we can't go there, but they have an in, online, I have glasses, online self-paced virtual engagement, whatever you're about, when you're trying to do this 2050, all right, it's a very good thing. So you go on here and see what they're planning, and then you can open your inventory at the cluster. So it just goes to the county board's webpage, and then definitely visit the website, and they'll kind of do the thing.
Okay, that brings you to my report. I don't have a lot of reports. I just had two incidentals, nothing that, there's always those little things that pop up every month, but nothing that's been more or even here. Hi, Andy.
Hello.
Are you? Uh, and let's see. Let's, there is not anything really, really helpful to board right now, so let's move on to public comments. Number one, anybody have any public, any comments? All right. I told my wife, my wife Sue is here, and I told her that she was not to take advantage of this three minutes. Consent agenda. Linda?
I knew that we adopted the consent agenda. Approved in minutes, 12.1, approved in minutes of previous meetings, 12.1A, April 21st, 2022, committee of the whole executive session, 12.1B, May 24th, 2022, regular meeting, monthly, 12.1C, January 12th, 2021, special call meeting, finance and industry committee, 12.2, exceptions of the treasurer's report, 12.2A, exceptions of the treasurer's report from May 31st, 2022, 12.3, authorization, authorized preparation specifications and letting up bids for the purchase of 11 acres of local area. But came through for a contact period of one year beginning September 1st, 2022, bid number 0622.07, that will run in 0622.0702, 12.4. Resolution number 22-40, operating within the district to establish a voluntary captive agricultural use. Farm operators, desire to place again with the 2023 law, is required for locations. 12.5, resolution number 22-41, the resolution operating in the amount of $1,457,875. July 1st, 2022, to the Bank of New York Mellon, NY Mellon, Dallas, Texas, for the general application, refining balance series 2014. 12.6, resolution number 22-42, a resolution authorizing travel expenses for the medical recreation of farm facilities, and FDA, 2022, conference meeting, Kevin Cooper, Arizona, where executive director Hester and Chief King had crossed that to receive $3,000. 12.7, resolution number 22-43, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the agreement, and agreement to the U.S.A., to provide some of the bulk and the benefits for the district. Per the cost and terms of the invoice quote dated March 23rd, 2022, which is offered through T-Mobile and AS, the O'Leary. 12.8, resolution number 22, batch 44, the resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the Fifth Amendment to standard license agreement pertaining to the sub-power facility at the higher lot first in the Alphania with Spectre Site Communication LLC, American Power Inc. 12.9, resolution number 22-46, a resolution approving the sale of point seven, point seven eight acres of land credit to D.R. Horton East Midwest of For the Grasslands Park, with Project Village of Barca, from Denver. 21-04, at $7,088, $96,000, operating the executive director to execute the necessary documents for sale.
I have a second. Second, Sean has the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Vice President Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
Yes. Carries unanimously. And for the people who are paid, those payable from Monday, 2022, I'll turn it over to Treasurer Fritz.
Okay, 13.1B, move for consideration to approve payment of the balance of EFS, indicated as a mission of bills pending report for the period ending May 31st, 2022.
I have a second. Linda has the second. Are there any discussion? None, I'll, I'll roll.
Vice President Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Treasurer Dayton?
Yes.
President Henning?
I'll abstain. Motion carries six, four, and one, ten. I didn't forget by this pass if anybody had any bills to hold on to. Everybody do that.
I got a question, two questions to answer.
Anybody else, all right? I don't see like there'll be any audit this month. All right. Then we'll go to, turn it back over to Treasurer Fritz.
13.1C, move for the consideration of proof of payment of the balance of bills, indicated as a submission of bills pending reports from the month ending May 31st, 2022.
I have a second. Bill has the second. Questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Vice President Cook?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, with that, Elizabeth, are you walking us through this budget timeline?
I would, yes. So Andy, you can jump in and help me as well. So we need to pack, and the recent weather is not on the consent agenda, just so that everybody's kind of familiar with our annual process. It seems as we just passed our budget, we're already starting again, and that's exactly what we do when we go ahead one, and we start the other. So next month, we are beginning to pull everything from all the staff, and we will be updating our capital asset management plan and natural camp program, and then meeting to take a look at in general some budget assumptions that we would like to bring forward to the board with some options. August, then, we will share that with the board. I did have an opportunity briefly today to talk with Vice President Cook, and I would like to suggest, if the board is so inclined, and why everybody's scheduled, is that we may want to have an additional meeting in August prior to the COW on August 13th to take a look at just a general, some of the assumptions. Give us a little bit more time. Again, I need to follow up if necessary on the 18th. So we would be looking at the second week of August through that following week through a Tuesday. So I believe that is our calendar. Yeah, either August 8th through the 11th, or the 15th and the 16th, whatever is the board most comfortable with. Again, our 18th is the COW, and then the regular meeting is the 23rd. So, or we'll decide tonight, or you can send out a due, and we kind of see if we can submit something.
I'll just put it, I think it would be a good idea because of the inflationary environment that we're in, that it's going to be challenging for camping and school to come up with some options and objections, and then for us to have a discussion and better understanding of. So I, I think the idea of finance will be meeting before the COW, probably makes sense. As far as the town goes, whatever works for everybody, that's what it's for me.
So we would package everything up, we would present that, and then September is the date to which we have the plan. So there's a wonderful board here that might give a framework plan, helping us to go ahead and review that plan, the assumptions that we provide to you, then in September, whether it's scheduled before the COW. And then the September meeting, it is the doddrake week, as per the board agreement, that is scheduled for February 2nd, so we'll just prepare that. And then from that process, the way that the schedule pans out, we get that second, after the assumptions are approved by the board in August, then we allow all of the leadership candidates and supervisors to fill out their legislative sheets, and they start pulling all the details together, and then that all is to finance and the leadership team and executives, and the team will review everything so that we can get a basically tentative budget that in front of the board in November. And then in January, we will do the tentative budget. It goes on the due in 30 days, and then the final thing will have to come during February, and then on the march, and then we'll get the first step. And the January meeting as well, to drop off the schedule and come and go back, we ask that, that is the order for us to get into the necessary timing for the public hearing process, that requires us to reaminate our regular schedule, and we started to immediately review the budget cycle backwards, to reduce the budget. Andy, anything you want to answer with the cycle?
No, you did a good job highlighting it. I would say it's a little bit of a meeting, we have a tentative budget highlights, and probably a good review of the full package, but anything you can tell about it?
So we're looking, in the discussion on those potential proposals, I agree with that the proposed timeline could be there, and we decided January is the second.
Great. Great. This is more than enough time? Thanks, Oliver. I'm used to doing it from January beginning in April. This is great.
Elizabeth, if you could explain us some possible things for the official reading, and people can respond in your opinion, and we'll.
So yeah, that, 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 that meeting in August is somewhere that we need to.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that resolution 22-45. So, uh, is Sean and Ellen the second. Are there any discussion? Roll call.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
Vice President Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
And Vice President, sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that. Secretary Thomas? Secretary Zimmerman?
Yes.
I apologize. We never called. President Henning?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, with that, brings us to the executive director report.
Just a few items. So one of the items that you have in your board tack is a wrap-up of the combination kind of this budget. So the board now, we've got to spend $10,000, 40% of that, the actual pocket, that's my kind of the staff time. The foundation also awarded the district a grant of $10,000 to the necessary award to continue to back, and having reported $10,000. So I just want to take the board's, and the boys, the foundation, so they can reverse the support account, and we also have the staffing coming to plan, as well as the subway components that work to.
Roll call.
Staff did a great job, and they support the meeting there, those intended delegates. There is a, last year, President Henning, you may recall, we ended up going to the Lake County Forest Preserves for their special legislative committee meeting. They also have another one planned, again, as they're looking to have a discussion about the measures as well, and that'll be on July 26th, 2022, that they're intending to throw, and it was an opportunity in the beer garden, music afterwards. So I will send this out, and I think that maybe you'd like to attend, and if you feel for what their point is, and the background of this, we have our 2018 sessions, enjoying them, and then we can come down and act on it last year.
Well, the meeting was nice, but the after meeting was really good. Beer garden, they have really good music, so if you, if you can take your cue from the foundation board and just show up late.
So I will send that out. Also, I did send to the board earlier, a follow-up, the demand request, and all the hearings, and letters, to let people know what's happening. Newly, what important sent in by the new sixth, we did that much, we did not really even try to handle it. So if you do want to ask for something important, we were back, and we'll see if we can deal with it, or whatever. I did also, I had a follow-up, and we'll do a follow-up with our chairman, and Senator, you know, Senator Lee. There was no one who filled out a form, she didn't. I think we had the August state, I think it was still a requirement, because that was kind of all the people. So I think we did that, and hopefully there will be response to them. And we did send, in terms of, we said happy, and to the ICA, and maybe it's office, so everybody's starting to pay for the information. And then Senator Roque also sent a letter of congratulations to the district, and I was completely greeted. Senator Elizabeth, Senator, my congratulations on most of these brands of war, McHenry County is lucky to have our outstanding campus about the area, and we recently read that the story landed, was back from bison, and raised creative ecosystem, and also to enhance the community under wildlife habitats. You'll always be above the ad, you're making a ten-time review of habitat, the wildlife, as well as the protected landscape for the citizens who live here. People get to enjoy our artistic and the same discussions as they would like. Congratulations, partners, and that's it for office. We can give another six to you, and we'll leave you this time. So again, Senator Roque, you guys, and the fire district on the project that you're going to hear about, the seed game, which is a great segue to Ed, Brad, and Brenna to talk about what we're going to be seeing this evening and what projects taking place in the site.
I'm just going to do the brief introduction, I'm going to pass it over to Brad and Brenna. It's the natural resource staff that's really done the work to make this happen on the ground. But I'll take this back just a few years to 1985, and the legislature district did its first study on whether it was feasible to actually restore large landscapes. At that time, the district had never restored an acre or ground anywhere on any of the studies. And so that study contained a section on what it was possible to do in terms of bringing back native wildlife that had been extirpated from the country. And I can remember at the end that a bunch of things were eliminated, we were never going to see them again. Badgers, river otters, turkeys, eagles nesting, osprey nesting, bears, wolves, cougar, and of course, bison. So fast forward to today, badgers are common, river otters are common, turkeys are all over, bison, eagles, and ospreys have both nested in the country. We had a bear for a while off Black Echo. We had a wolf, wolf, drove killed over by a living parrot two years ago, and there was a cougar that passed through the county on the way to Chicago before it met its unsettling demise in the neighborhood. But bison were always the dream, and they were always elusive. So we talked about it between 1986 and 1988, and it wasn't feasible, and we talked about it again in 2014, and it wasn't feasible, and we talked about it again. I talked about it again in 2016, and it's still a bit feasible. At this point, I'll leave the bison for a moment, and I'll talk about networking, and why sometimes the, the networks that we form within the district, either the trustees or the staff, sometimes bear some of the strangest fruit that you would never have imagined. So we began a process a few years ago to work with a non-governmental organization called the Liberty Prairie Foundation to try to develop an agricultural conservation index. So we could track the great job that our farm operators are doing on our properties for conservation, and we made that connection with their staff. And out of that connection came the opportunity to network on bison, with a bison operator, Brad going to the family, and how we wound up with that, and Brenna will talk, talk to you about that once we get to that point. But it was that kind of serendipitous networking with another organization, and then becoming familiar with us and our sites, that allowed us to wind up matching up with someone they knew who wanted to do a bison operation. The site that we're going to see tonight has had cattle on it for a long time, 10 years after the district bought it, and we have used those cattle along with our joint grassland venture to manage through agriculture, grazing, and agriculture for grassland birds. And I'm happy to say that as of December of this past year, 2021, the idea of bison was no longer just an idea. Today arrived, and Brad, I'm going to turn the rest of the story over.
I'll be there. All right. Yeah, so it was, it was pretty exciting to match her. It was just a year and a half ago that we put our RFP out, and that was a request proposal to look at grazing. We already had a grazing operator, cattle grazing operator, we'll try by it, and that was your question, Bill. And so we, we had this pasture there, but we had another pasture that we were going to develop that was already in existence. It wasn't a bison pasture, so we put an RFP out, said, hey, we want to graze this, we want to expand grazing, and probably Brenna would love to talk about this too, you know, we want to have grazing on landscape, the prairie of all. That's kind of the why, the prairie of all was grazed, so we, we've had a problem with big, loose, dumpy, bean grass dominating our prairie estrations. Bison would naturally feed on those, and even that balanced out. The other thing that, that grazing does is it creates this really diverse structure, so it's just not a monotopic span. So we actually see really, the first have all these niches, and they really benefit from modern grazing. So we put this RFP out, and through that network, we were able to find the rooster family, and all of a sudden, you know, Nathan Albert said, oh, yeah, we have this, these people out here, they might be interested, so we sent them, sent them the RFP, kind of worked with them through the process, and then our board here approved this lease probably about a year ago after the RFP process. And basically, it's a joint venture, so the farmer, they built the fence, they're going to build the corrals, they own the bison, we have the land, but we're actually working jointly to make sure that the pasture's going to be grazed properly, that there's going to be rotational grazing, they're managing it, so we're not putting any extra labor in. So what's nice about when we work with our farmers, they're providing labor, and they're managing the land, investing conservation value, and we're getting the benefit. And this one, we have a particular benefit where we have people just coming out of woodwork wanting to see the bison. So I was riding my bike, actually, on the weekend, rode by, and I saw the bison, I was with somebody else and pointing them out. So it's just, it's going to be a great draw when we can do all the development on the site. So I guess I'll stop right there. I don't refer to having prepared any of the items, go for it.
I did not prepare anything. What I will add is just that when we go out there tonight, you'll see the impact that the bison and the rooters and our staff have made in such a short amount of time, a year, recently. The bison have created a wallow already, which is part of that diverse habitat that Brad's talking about, and that I'm going to be working for, I am working with our research station, all this title, Thompson, to measure the impact of the bison on the vegetation structure, and we're going to go out every year and monitor that. Cindy Dublowski is measuring bird population, bison bird populations there. The Mudders have installed this beautiful new fence, and we're doing an education program, an education department, and we've already had so much other help from other departments to get this project off the ground, and, you know, it's just the beginning, I'm really excited to see where it goes with the year, but, and just a few months ago, it seems like we seeded the 90 acres in the back, and already it looks like a baby prairie, which is really exciting, so, yeah, I'll say that.
If there's any questions, we'll be happy to, happy to be asked.
So is that the plan we're taking on, being the, what we're taking, you know, walk out there?
Right.
Not walking, or?
It's a couple miles.
That's.
We can walk around the pasture, we're not going to need to drive there.
All right, well, thank you for, or does anybody have any questions right now, or we?
What was the name of that, Liberty Prairie?
Liberty Prairie Foundation.
And you guys are also going to be a demonstration. And you guys are also going to be a demonstration set, yes, for the, the bison, isn't it? Um, yes, sorry, thank you. Um, yes, so the rooters are part of the National Bison Association, who received a grant from, um, the Ag Research Group, a difficult title, um, to host a series of bison ranching, regenerative bison ranching workshops. Um, and so the rooters offered to work with us to, uh, host it at Pleasant Valley, to not only demonstrate regenerative grazing, rotational grazing, but also working with a public entity to boost lands, a public partner.
That'll be in October.
All right, we're good. What else could I add? Foundations here, how many dollars?
Um, around twenty-seven, seventy dollars for the seeding. The letter that Senator Wolfax wrote, which is for the grant, um, that is going to help seed it, and also is purchasing a flail bag, has purchased a flail bag, I believe.
It's purchased, but on board like everything else, it's going to take a while. But no, I should mention that, too, that's a huge deal, because we'll be able to collect probably another fifty or sixty, we'll pay for it in one year, with, so we'll actually have two flail bags, be able to collect seed. Our main processing is actually at Pleasant Valley, we'll be able to have another one up north, so we'll collect seed from two different parts of the county, and so, well, I, I'm hoping we're going to collect over two hundred thousand dollars worth of seed, both the volunteers and our staff. So that's a huge deal to leverage that, that money and, and purchase the seed. What's the, what's our annual budget for the seed? You can let us know. Oh, we, we, we purchased about fifty-five thousand dollars in seed, but we collect, you know, so much more, so that, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that's how much we spend out of pocket, but we'll, we collect this right now. So is there something that we can't collect ever, or is it possible that we're getting more, you could collect everything? It's possible, so recent, I, this is just all kind of matched up perfectly, so, you know, about the, we're, we're, we're going to seed down forty acres a year, we're hoping we can offset most of that cost with collecting seed. So, yeah, we, we, we're going to be significantly reducing that, maybe we will be able to collect enough so we don't have to purchase out of, out of pocket. But I don't want to speak for Lori, because Lori likes to have these beautiful seed mixes, um, that are very diverse and very resilient, so we can only collect so much, and, and, well, and then they collect a lot, you know, and stuff that's very rare, but then she has, she purchases some of that rare seed as well, that's part of the plan.
So wood, woodland species are really very different, okay?
Yeah, it's woodland, yeah. All right, anything else? All right, it's all very important. So we'll move on to many assignments, trustees important, the independent. Hey, Fox, where are you, go six, go one. Any go, anyone done that? I want to pick one.
Uh, no meeting this month, meeting next month, but I will be out of country, so maybe I can get somebody to go with my stuff there, but typically, it's an hour and a half on Friday around ten-thirty, but I can, I'll stop it. I'll allow you to see yourself. If not, I'll activate.
Hey, Chicago Wilderness?
Uh, the next executive council meeting is July twentieth, and we'll be bison.
Henry, Mike, Tom, Earl?
Uh, we had a meeting last week, um, actually, we had a corner. Most of the farmers got done planting. Uh, one of the main objects, or topics I brought up is with the vultures that are moving from south to north, and they're maybe like, good calves? I don't know what kind of vultures they are, but...
The, the black vultures, I've read some articles about it, yeah. We, we have turkey vultures here, but black vultures are not.
So they're, yeah, and they're moving this way. I mean, if you got calves, you're supposed to watch them.
Anything else? That was a big topic, okay. All right, IA CFPD, IA PD, and, and our PA, we'll listen.
Yes, so, um, IA PD has been sending out some great webinars, workshops for boards and trustees to be able to participate or stay at, so they have a, a upcoming one on the L D P community, so that's an opportunity. I also, for the trustees, I gave you the membership, uh, there's a program, people are going through your board development training, and insisting trustees that opportunities there as well, to just connect the time of attending workshops, conferences, and advocacy efforts, both in Springfield and Washington and locally, so if anyone's interested, let me know, and we can connect with you. Um, the next Illinois Association of Conservation Forte to District meeting will be in January at the state conference, and then I'll get information out soon if it is available for any trustees that want to attend the January conference in, uh, Chicago, so they can basically manage on their own.
Okay, Conservation Foundation?
Um, no meeting. Next, next month is the meeting, but do you want to update on cattle, cattle saddle, or?
Uh, make sure I'm going to give a quick, okay? We hosted our annual friend racer last Sat, Sunday, um, June fourth. We had about a hundred and thirty people attend, and in total, brought in just over ten thousand dollars. Um, that's before expenses have been taken out, though, we're still processing those, but good attendance, um, and great weather. It was under sixty degrees before the sun came out around eleven o'clock, so, nice. Thanks, John.
So that, about normal attendance, or?
Yeah, it was average attendance, um, probably comparative to twenty eighteen, um, or no, twenty nineteen, or twenty eighteen. Uh, last year, we had a boost in attendance, but it was because people couldn't do anything else that day, so.
Uh, Macog? You want to come down?
Trustee, is there anything you want to report?
I don't know.
Are you going Friday?
Oh, it's tomorrow. Yeah, I've been going, yeah, but tomorrow.
Oh, okay, you're looking forward to it.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I have no report, uh, next month I will back.
All right, great. Three drinks. Was, was your down on that, or?
I did, I did the last one again.
All right, Anne?
Here, the, uh, program was cycle, now, they just talked about the, um, cooperation with the district for storage and for volunteers, and, um, the continued, uh, progress with musical portrayal for continuing that program, and popular is the Asian.
All right. Bicycle and pedestrian plan, John?
Uh, yes, uh, there was a meeting, uh, last week, um, several things discussed. My thought was very interesting was an initiative coming out of the county county health department, uh, titled Try Something New for a Healthier You, called part of this, uh, uh, active living coalition working together, and they, they want to reach out to us to figure out what kinds of things we might be able to do together, um, and, uh, the whole idea that, you know, go walk at a park, or, or go take your bike on a trail, or, you know, try something new for, you know, like, create healthier habits. So I did ask that, um, I did on their email list for that, and I'll start corresponding. I've worked with Becky in the past in our education department to connect. I think we'll probably try to do that same thing, do that cross, uh, promoting and things like that. A lot of the things we do are very similar, so, they, they plug our sites all the time.
Naturally, McHenry County?
Uh, the meeting for this month was cancelled, so no report.
All right. Anybody else have any outreach contacts? I think it's down to outgoing board members. The end is really near. So are you doing that, or am I doing that?
Well, I guess Elizabeth and I are doing this. So I'm going to stand, just to stretch my legs, and, um, I'm going to read from this plaque regarding our illustrious, uh, soon-to-be past president, but let me say that, uh, John has occupied this chair, the gavel, I don't know if he's ever used the gavel, what he uses is his personality and his calm demeanor, and he's a gentleman, uh, he has, um, he's a strong individual, um, and he's a very organized individual. He's been a pleasure to, um, work with, I think I can speak for all of the other trustees, and I hope I can speak for the staff as well. He's a, been a first-class president. So this is presented to John Pete Henning for his outstanding contribution to the McHenry County Conservation District. He is hereby commended for his tireless effort and devotion toward promoting the long-term viability of the county's biodiversity, for encouraging responsible against natural resources, and advocating for sound environmental practices, for tireless effort in working cooperatively with private public individuals to support the benefits of conservation and vision of the district. John has been a trustee between July two thousand seventeen and, uh, June of this year, and he was the fourth president for two years, so twenty to twenty-one, and twenty-one to twenty-two. So, John, go have a stand.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to say anything? Do you want to cut him down?
Not at all.
You've got to think, Ted.
Now, before John, I got a few more easier to ask.
Oh, thank you.
And, um, you know, it's got something also for trustee lady, you know, trustee American lady, because now you are graduating into the trustee American class. And that's a very distinguished group, uh, to which you don't go far, and you're always a full count lady, and so there's efforts, and work to do, and other assistance to help advocate, we'll call on you regularly. But, um, when you begin the board in twenty seventeen, you've been involved with a variety of different things, and I just want to give you a little bit of history, but you've been through a lot, and under, but quite a lot of the conference, but there, there are times here on the board, um, you've been able to participate in a tree conservation congress in some people. Um, we executed a land preservation project, a gift agreement, and then we're in the budgeting, uh, the tree conservation foundation, and James and Val Blay, uh, there was a grant application with US Department of Transportation, for federal lands access, uh, renovations and associated trail, wildlife access, and Hart School in Inwood. Um, we had the William Rosen request, and, uh, the fourth time we memorialize that, um, COVID, COVID was during the time, you see, and the president, you had guys, this during two years of what went to be online remote meetings, and increased the agency's transparency, and access, uh, direct transparency, or, but now, all the meetings are streamed live, recorded, and it's increased access to that. Um, we followed and sent events into the Department of Commerce and Economic Analysis for the coronavirus, the innovation, and legacy cares reports. Um, we also authorized the execution of the Wilson's Buckle Gift Agreement. We had, um, the list goes on, uh, the foundation, we had a donor that provided, uh, five acres of play at the High Pond Conservation Area, George and Neil Johnson, and Mitchell and Mickaker, who now will have a few seed harvest areas, so the community that seed there was established, and is able to spread that and ensure these efforts are really important to the county. Another big was the work towards the solution of the permanent transfer of our funds out of the double fund into our natural resource manager special revenue fund, so we can pay off in four-puhr education installments going, that service fund now, and so that has been taken care of, and, uh, so that will be, be off closer into the future. Established our school springs, wetland stream innovation banks during the term, and we're already seeing revenue coming through that process. Um, numerous grants to IDNR for investments into our perfect trail and renovation, and we reviewed the archaeological work, uh, for the teaching area, how it was constituted in the period by Midwest Archaeological Research, so to determine the historical value of the property, and the essence of the historical heritage of the local needs. Um, I know in John, when we were doing trustee orientation, and, uh, Brad, I believe, uh, we were seeing trustee of ours that said, John, look what you have accomplished during the time, it's like more buildings out.
You showed me those buildings, I was the first lady you showed me, and I'm thinking, those should go down.
And John would agree with you, so pick those buildings out, so we've been making efforts to do that. Of course, here tonight, what we're going to see after the meeting is that fifteen-year conservation raising, these great, uh, rooters here introducing our natural grazing back to McHenry County here. Um, the commission of the tree foundation on the regeneration, uh, archaeological function report on the district farm program, so that was, uh, done during that time, and, um, yeah, there's just been so much. And then lastly, I would say the sustaining dream financial framework plan, uh, which is important, because that will take us forward of how we will work with our reserves, and that day, we will be a hundred percent free, which is not too far in the distance in the work that needs to be done after you're gone, but we will need your support on the other side. So, again, um, a lot of the accomplishments here, John, so thank you so much from the staff here at the district, uh, for all your interest and, and what you brought to the agency, truly appreciated, and we have something for you. And then also, I do want to read something from Bonnie, this is from Bonnie.
Bonnie?
Bonnie, and I'll read you what Bonnie has to say. Bonnie has a tradition, it's that, that she always comes in and usually does something to, uh, to trustees that are leaving the board, and she says, John, wish I could be here for your send-out, and what I send out is bison and all. Thank you for all, thank you for all you have contributed to MCCD and conservation, the very best. Bye.
Bonnie's a wonderful person, though, you know, she's, I've known her for, for probably thirty-five, forty years, and she's really wonderful. Um, anything else that you can, if there are any questions? Okay, great. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone here, and thank you to this, from, to begin with, the staff, I mean, that's a great list of accomplishments, and all of you did it, I wish I could say I did all that, but I didn't, all of you did it. And, um, every staff member here is such a great professional. Anytime there's a question to be answered, it's answered immediately, or not, they look up there and give you the information right away. It's unbelievable how fast people get things done, and the knowledge is here. We're so fortunate in McHenry County to have the staff that we have here. I know that all of you have quite a few years of experience, and I hope that all of you continue to be here for quite some time, and, uh, you're not going to be able to train somebody to be as efficient and as knowledgeable as all of you are, but, um, it's just, they have asked for all you can do. So thank you to all of you. Um, I'd like to thank the foundations for the great support that you are giving to this, uh, organization. Uh, it's, it's a group that just continues to grow, and, uh, their enthusiasm gets better, bigger, and, like, Brad, you got a great start all these years, and you're, and, uh, thank you, Brad, and for all the years you've served as that president, and, uh, and, uh, there's just great things coming from that, from that organization, so, um, we're, we're, the, uh, district is going to be at a top-notch level, the foundations are taking it to the next level, yeah, that, yeah. So, um, and then on to the, the board members, the trustees that are sitting here. Each of you, uh, come here each month, and, uh, get the chance to work with this great organization, and, uh, you get an opportunity to ask questions and prod on, and, and, you don't always have to agree, you just need to have a good, intelligent conversation and find the middle ground where all of us come from different backgrounds, and you have different views, and, uh, that shouldn't stop any of us from, uh, stating those views and finding out what better person thinks, and find out, find where we can all go together. And, um, I think that's how we get to where we are. And, um, well, that, that's all I really have to say, but thank you to all of you.
I got one thing to say, this is about John. I've known John for a long time, and I was, my third year I'm here, two years he was president, and he's, uh, he's got a cool head, and he keeps things, you know, rolling, rolling very well. You know, it's not, it's, it could be conflict, but there isn't. I mean, he lets you, you know, lets you voice your opinion, and we all come to a consensus, but he's, he's lithe, he's, very good. Thank you.
So that brings us to public comments to...
So that brings us to public comments, too. We didn't have any on one, so I'm not expecting any now. So, all right, we're done with public comments, and back it was to adjournment. I like that motion. Then Chris, Bill and Chris, send a motion to the second. Go call.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Secretary Tomlin?
Yes.
Vice President Hook?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Gage?
Yes.
Trustee Simmons?
Yes.
So the motion carries. We are adjourned.